Board of Commissioners, regular scheduled board meeting today, six thirty Tuesday, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty five. You good? Okay. We're going to begin our meeting with our invocation, Pastor Leonard Himes, and then he will also lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. If everyone was staying.
Good evening. Let's pray together. Lord, we come to thee upon this night. Lord, thank you not only for another day, but another week. And as we meet tonight to discuss the business of government, government that you initiated, but yet you entrusted people to execute that with not only civil authority, but honesty and integrity. So we ask your blessing on this meeting, all the decisions, and Lord, just lead, guide, and direct, and we'll certainly thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
I'd like to call our meeting to order. The following have announcement, the following planning and zoning items were advertised for August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty five, BLC meeting, but have been removed by the applicant, and that is Comp Amendment twenty-five dash one and RZ dash twenty-four dash sixteen. Both these items have been postponed and will be heard at a later time. Next item on the agenda is the proclamation recognizing Community Bible Church. If Amber would come forward, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Pillars of the Community. It is an honor to present to the public today a proclamation recognizing Community Bible Church and Pastor Beau Adams. Whereas the Henry County Board of Commissioners is proud to recognize individuals and organizations whose dedication and selfless service positively impact the quality of life in our community. And whereas Community Bible Church, under the leadership of Pastor Beau Adams, has consistently demonstrated exceptional commitment to supporting Henry County Fire Rescue and public safety personnel through acts of kindness, service, and hospitality. And whereas for more than a decade, Community Bible Church has hosted an annual Public Safety Day luncheon, providing meals and fellowship to law enforcement and fire personnel, exemplifying a strong and enduring partnership between the church and our first responders. And whereas Community Bible Church served as the host facility for the Celebration of Life Ceremony for Shannon Pope on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, offering a space of comfort, honor, and remembrance for the family, friends, and colleagues of a valued member of Henry County Fire Rescue. And whereas the church continues to serve the community in meaningful ways by hosting milestone events for Henry County Fire Rescue, including recruit graduation ceremonies, which mark the beginning of committed to public service and safety. And whereas Community Bible Church also served as the host facility for the Ignite Women's Conference in June, two thousand and twenty-five, empowering and encouraging the women of Henry County and further demonstrating the church's outreach and dedication to community enrichment. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Neet Robinson, and Commissioners Johnny Wilson, DeAnglin III, Michael Price, and Kevin J. Lewis, hereby extends its heartfelt appreciation and sincere commendation to Community Bible Church and Pastor Beau Adams for their outstanding service, steadfast support, and continued commitment to uplifting and serving Henry County's public safety community this nineteenth day of August, two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you.
We also have another presentation to make as well outside of the proclamation. We have a mic right here. Chief, they're gonna ask you to do that presentation again because they're recording it. Nobody can hear. So Chief Officer, this is your time. This is your time. So do you remember what you said? I just want to remember what I said. I got your mic.
Henry County Fire Rescue and
Henry County at Large.
For all the kind acts of service you've sent to Henry County Fire Rescue and the county at large, we present you with this fire helmet. It has an official shield that will never be used again and will only be used for your church, Community Bible, and it says, greater than he that sent me. We present this helmet to you with our deepest gratitude and thanks for partnering with Henry County Fire and Rescue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. This is awesome. I'm sorry, go ahead, Madam Chair.
I was gonna tell Chief to come back.
I will tell you from our department, the At Night Conference, and all the other events that you all have been a part of and helped supporting, not only Henry County Fire Rescue, it's the entire county. Team Henry, as we said, Team Henry, Team Henry. We're so thankful to you all. The At Night Conference was such a success, and we've talked to folks from all around the country over the last few weeks. And just so thankful to, not only to Community Bible Baptists, but to all of our elected and everyone that's here. Thank y'all so much for your support and allowing us to be able to do some amazing things. So I'm gonna turn it over to you just for one second if any words you wanna have.
Truly, it's a blessing for us. You know, the Lord says that when you are the light of the world, you step out and you try to bless others, the blessing always comes back. And you guys have blessed us in return by this, but we do, as a church, want to be the people here in this community that continue to show Christ's love everywhere we can go, everything we can do. And it's a privilege for us to be here in this county, in this community, with you guys and serving alongside. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
He turned us off.
Okay, so is this? Let's talk. Okay, let's talk about what the real issue is here. Breaking news, breaking news. Is there somebody in here named Johnny Holland? Is Johnny Holland here?
Congratulations on your retirement. I'm gonna miss you and enjoy your retirement.
Hey Johnny, this is Anto. Congratulations on your retirement. It looks like you got out of here before I did, even though I had to leave and come back, but congratulations, my brother.
Johnny, I heard you retired, man. Congratulations. It's been a great run for you. And I will never forget that one time way back in the day, when I backed over and fell off the slope, I fell off the back of that slope, and y'all did nothing but sit up there and laugh at me and had the truck stuck, and you had to come and pull me back out. Man, I'm gonna miss you, but I know you'll still be around. You got my number. Look forward to hearing from you when you retire. Enjoy.
Good evening. Just want to say congratulations, Johnny Holland, on your retirement. Had a pleasure of working with you at DOT for several years. The county is going to be at a loss without you. We're gonna miss you. But please enjoy your retirement, and again, thank you for the years of service that you've given to the county.
Hey Johnny, congratulations on your retirement. Looking forward to seeing what your next chapter holds for you. Hope you enjoy retirement and come back and visit us at Henry County. Thanks for all your service.
Hi Johnny, I want to congratulate you for your years of service. We've been working together for over twenty-three years. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I hope you have a great retirement and enjoy. Take care.
Happy retirement to Johnny Holland after serving twenty-six years with the Henry County Department of Transportation. We hope that you take some time to continue to enjoy your grandbabies at the beach, and maybe I will come and help you pour some concrete in the near future. Happy retirement and enjoy.
Johnny Holland, congratulations on your retirement, man. I know it's been a long time coming, but you've been truly committed to Henry County. We really appreciate everything that you've done while you were here, and we wish you well after your retirement. I know you're gonna be on the beach somewhere enjoying yourself, but have a great time, man, and I know I'll be seeing you again.
Happy retirement, Johnny. We greatly appreciate all your years of hard work here given to Henry County. Thank you.
Hi, this is an official congratulation to Mr. Johnny Holland. We thank you for your many, many years of service and your many, many years of being at the county and looking forward to seeing what you do in the future, Mr. Holland. And don't forget about us. I'm Gavin here at the DOT. Always check in. My door is always open for you, and I hope your door is open. And we love having you here. We thank and hope to see you again in the future.
Congratulations, Johnny. We're congratulating you and wishing you well in your retirement and thanking you for your service to Henry. Thank you for being Henry committed and for caring all of these many years. Thank you for the lessons you've shown and taught those coming up behind you. Thank you for your service.
Yeah, so Johnny, we want to congratulate you on your retirement. Thanks for the many years of dedication to the Henry County DOT team. We're going to miss you, and we wish you a very happy retirement.
Mr. Johnny Holland, I just want to say congratulations on your retirement. I have been knowing you and your wife for a very long time, and I'm super excited for the both of you. Just know that we appreciate all of your efforts that you have done for our DOT here in Henry County. And again, I wish you all the blessings. There's more to come for you and your wife in this new life as you move forward. Love you guys. Be blessed.
All right, Johnny Holland, man, we have worked together for a long, 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 long time, and man, the time has come. You've got to go ahead on and get on out of here with retirement, man, and so we just want to basically just wish you the best on your retirement. Good luck.
Congratulations, Johnny. Well deserved.
Johnny, take care of yourself. I enjoyed working with you at DOT. Learned a lot of things from you. If you ever need anything, feel free to call.
Johnny Holland, that's the only name I knew in Henry County even before I came over to DOT. Not Johnny that worked at DOT, the whole name Johnny Holland. But you know what? It's good to be seen, good to be heard. Here's the thing, if you're not talked about, you're not relevant, and you was talked about, and you were relevant. I don't think the word is infinites I want to use, but you're a legend, Johnny. You've done a lot of projects, not just in DOT, but for other departments as well, from Parks and Rec, Police Station, you name it. You weren't afraid to tell people what you can do, and you went out there and showed people what to do, and also taught some of the younger guys how to use the equipment as well. So yeah, I was looking forward to meeting you when management asked me to come over and help out the DOT. And you proudly and boldly introduced yourself, and it was kind of comical at first, what have you, because some people don't know how to take you, Johnny, but I do. Sometimes people say you need to take him in small doses. No, you take Johnny in whole doses. Take the whole package because he gonna give you the whole package, what have you. You've already been accountable, always been accountable. And I'm kind of sad because it feel like I came over here and you ran away. You know, I was hurt in my feeling, but you know, but it's all good. It's all good. But hey, I know you're gonna be around. Enjoy your retirement. You've been working really, really hard and what have you. I know your wife's got a lot of honeydews for you because you already told me about some of them. But hey, don't be a stranger's drop at any time, man. I'm looking forward to you enjoying yourself. So take care, Mr. Holland. We'll see you soon.
Hey Johnny, congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for the years of service and your leadership in the DOT Division, and you would truly be missed. And I'm not sure that anybody can fill your shoes, but let's hope we can find someone to do that, and thank you again.
Congratulations, Johnny. We are incredibly excited about everything you get to do next. Thank you for everything you've done for Henry County. I believe two weeks ago I was in a meeting, and you told me that you have paved and laid pipe in every road in this county, and I believe it. We're excited. Congratulations. Thank you for everything you've done for this county. We hope you enjoy your retirement.
Good evening, Johnny Holland. Guess what? We absolutely got you because the surprise is on you. I just want to send my appreciation to you for being a dedicated employee of Henry County Government. But most importantly, I want to congratulate you on your retirement. You will be missed dearly, but I know that you're going to enjoy your time spent with your family. Your contributions to Henry County Government is something that cannot be matched, and I understand that there are going to be some big shoes to fill. But please know that we are so appreciative of all that you've done as a Henry County employee. And so today I salute you and I say congratulations on your retirement. You will be missed, and for the record, you are my favorite.
Hello, Johnny. The surprise is on you. Congratulations on your retirement. I'm gonna miss you and enjoy you.
So we knew that Commissioners were all in on this, that Johnny would not allow us to have a retirement party. And when I tell you it was the hardest thing to get him here and his wife, we had to like call some best friends, the whole family. So y'all come on up because we do have a small token of appreciation for Johnny Holland because you are truly a legend, and you will sorely, sorely, sorely be missed. So thank you for your service. I know your wife is here. I think you have other family members here. That was our technical difficulty. They were getting ready to walk in the door. We had to push them out. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Johnny Holland, we love you, and you will be missed, but we're still gonna call on you. So I'll get some pictures, then we got a certificate and a plaque to present to you. And then I do want to have any members of our DOT team in the next photo.
Hey Johnny, like I said, you're the only person in Henry County I was introduced by the whole name, Johnny Holland, way before I got to DOT. But for real, tell this a quick story real quick about you. I remember the first time I met Johnny, I was driving over to the new Aquatic Center, and he pulled up, looked at me cross-eyed, you know, didn't say anything. Then he went to leave, what have you, and then Johnny said, "Oh, you wasn't gonna speak to me?" I'm like, "What'd you say to me?" And we was good from that point on. But hey, man, it's been a pleasure working with you the last six months directly, and on behalf of the DOT and all of Henry County and all the citizens here, we appreciate your 26 years of service. Thank you.
Just for the record. Next item on the agenda is capital projects, resolution approving a contract with Prime Contractors for construction of metal building. Lynn, there you are, Lynn. Commissioner Lewis, are you there? Is he there? Commissioner Lewis.
Good evening, madam.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure, recognize you were on the line.
Wonderful. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and Pillars of the Henry County Community. Before you is a resolution approving a contract for the construction of a new pre-engineered metal building. This metal building will be for the Henry County DOT to use up in the Fairview community area. It is a 50-foot by 100-foot pre-engineered building. It will be completed through the Sourcewell EZIQC contract. Prime Contractors is the contractor. The building will be paid for through the Capital Improvement Plan funds. This is the bond funds. This is the EZIQ contract, and here is a picture, this is an example picture of what the building will look like up there. This is the exact same size as it will be. It may be configured slightly different. The location of the building, as I said, is in Fairview. It is behind the current fuel area in the old Station 6. It will not be seen from the road, but it is a beautiful functional building that will also be built out for a little bit of meeting space for employees up in that area.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
When you're saying meeting space, basically when they're, before they go out?
Exactly. Yes, yes.
Because you know I was finna say, well, they need someone.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, just teasing. Thank you.
If there are no questions, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving the purchase of two hydro digs, whatever that is.
Good evening, Chair, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners and Pillars of the Community. Thank you for lending me your ears this evening. Before you's resolution to approve the purchase of quantity of two hydro digs, part number HD1110WT4F from West Pro JCB for Henry County DOT, in the amount of $357,136.28 through the Sourcewell contract, 020223-JCB. Funding is available through the Capital Improvement Plan bonds. And there's an example of the hydro dig. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I've seen two different attachments. So you buying attachments to go with it or just the tractor itself?
Yes, sir. It comes with one of the attachments. The thing about this particular piece of equipment, it's like a Swiss Army knife. For example, you know what a grade all is, where we use to clean and scoop the ditches out? A grade all is only specific for that particular activity. This hydro dig is a Swiss Army knife. We're gonna put different attachments on it, including the scoop the dead ditches. When inclement weather comes with snow and ice to bring down trees, we could put a grappling hook on it to move trees out the road, and so on and so forth. So this equipment is half the price of the traditional grade all. Therefore, will be allowed to be more responsive to our citizens in both the southern and northern part of the county.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I got one. The traditional grade all is a drivable piece of equipment. Would this have to be driven or towed?
Both. Suspects say it can get up to 35, 40 miles per hour. So in short distances, we move from one location to the other, if it's only a matter of five miles or less, we probably drive it. But when we have to go 10 or 15 miles, we'll tow it. And the great thing about it, we don't need a Class A C D to drive it, unlike the grade all.
Any additional questions? Can I get a motion to approve? Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
Next, we have a resolution to approve the purchase of quantity of two mini excavators, part number 100C-2T4 from West Pro JCB for the Henry County Department of Transportation, in the total amount of $231,600 through the Sourcewell contract, 020223-JCB. Funding is available through Capital Improvement Plan bonds. And this is example of the mini excavator. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Can I get a motion to approve? Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Planning is on, the next item on the agenda is annexation of property, City of Hampton.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members and Pillars of the Henry County Community. The item before you is a property located on Fortson Road north of Lower Woolsey Road for a total of 158.37 plus or minus acres. Current property is Zoned M1 Light Manufacturing and RA Residential Agricultural. That M1 is shown in that gray, RA in that white. Future land use map designation is low density mixed use. The owners of the, of one of the three subject properties have submitted an annexation application to the City of Hampton, causing annexation using the 60% method, with signatures from the owner of at least 60% of the land area. Owner signature is from that M1 piece, that larger piece. Signatures from the remaining owners must be acquired within one year from the time of the first signature is obtained as per DCA, I'm sorry, as per OCGA. As per the application materials, City of Hampton proposes to annex the subject properties without changing the current zoning classifications, so they'd all, they'll be moved to the City of Hampton equivalent of the RA and M1 zoning districts. Although it would appear that the annexation would not create a substantial or significant change in the zoning or land use, density, or increase in infrastructure demands, it would appear that the annexation request would exacerbate an existing island of unincorporated territory, which is prohibited as per OCGA Section 3636-4. So this current area here, shown in green, is city property. The remaining piece is unincorporated Henry County. This piece of unincorporated territory is an existing island of unincorporated territory, OCGA 3636-4. We have conflicts with that as far as this annexation request goes. With that being said, staff is of the opinion that grounds for objection to this annexation request are present as per 3636-4. We have to take any questions.
Commissioner Wilson, this is in your district. Do you have any other questions?
I don't have any other questions, ma'am. So, but I'll let any other board member.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Okay.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion to go along with staff recommendation on the objection.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion, Commissioner Lewis? Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is FLOS. Resolution approving the purchase of playground equipments and a resolution approving the project framework agreement.
Good day, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners. I am here to present to you a resolution approving the purchase of a playground equipment and poured rubber surface for JP Mosley Park from game time in the amount of $622,457.79 through the Omni Partners contract, number 2017001134, utilizing District 4 SPOS 5 funds. There's a need to replace this playground. The playground that is existing at JP Mosley Park has been there, from my understanding, since the park opened. We do have some issues with that playground. That area floods. Whenever there's a heavy rain or slight rain, that area is just underwater. So with this new playground, we'll be addressing a lot of the drainage issues over there as well. And then additionally, we'll be coming back to replace the pavilions as well in that area. So this will be a nice, beautiful, beautiful playground for ages 2 to 5 and then 6 to 12. So there's actually two separate play areas for the kids, just like there is now. We'll be replacing all of that, and we'll have the poured rubber surface. It'd be ADA compliant, inclusive equipment, so we're very excited about this playground. Here's a few more pictures of the draft mock-up. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I do have a question. What's the timeframe?
So, we're, once this approved, then I'll let them know, and they'll start building it. It'll be a couple months for them to build the equipment, and then we'll get it in. So, what's this, August, September, October, November, December? Beginning of next year, we should have it in. Yep. Yes, be ready for the spring. That's the goal.
Have any drainage improvements began already?
No. So we have to remove the old equipment first, and then the playground company's doing some drainage, and as well as our stormwater, we'll be doing some drainage.
Now, this one looks much larger than what's currently in place, so is it going to have the same footprint? Is it being expanded?
It's the same footprint. There are more pieces that go up, so it looks larger. And there are a few more pieces around. There are some, there's some dead space in the current playground, so we're utilizing all of the space. That's why it looks larger.
Any additional questions? Commissioner, this is?
I have to make most of the group resolution for the playground equipment at JP Mosley Park.
Got a motion and a second. No further questions. All in favor? Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Next, we have Rocket.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chairs, Commissioners, and Pillars of Henry County. The next resolution is a resolution approving the project framework agreement, or PFA, between Henry County and the Georgia Department of Transportation for the Camp Creek Greenway Trail. This is in District 5 SPOS 6 funds. So this agreement is to enter with, as I mentioned, with Georgia Department of Transportation for this design for the Camp Creek Trail Greenway. This is a shared project with, also with the City of McDonough. The county's gonna receive design funds for about $1.5 million in federal funds. This is for preliminary engineering or design, with a local match of $375,000. The local match is coming from, as I mentioned, District 5 SPOS 6, and also through the City of McDonough, which we have an IGA agreement when we passed the SPOS 6. And as you can see the breakdown, 30% of the match is coming from the county, and 70% is coming from the city. And as you can see in the drawing, the trail will start roughly where McDonough Square is, and it's gonna come all the way basically to in front of this building. I will take any questions at this time.
Commissioner Lewis, this is in your district. You have any?
I think it's excellent evidence. Again, we are working with our cities and especially utilizing our SPOS fund for the benefit of all residents in the county. So, so thank you very much, Rocket and the SPOS team for making this happen.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Got a motion? Got a second? Motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is our tax commissioner. This is the third public hearing for the military, so we will have our tax commissioner, Michael Harris, to come forward, and our budget director, Bonita Campbell, who will be making the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Pillars of the Henry County Community. Tonight is the third and final military rate discussion for 2025. Due to the main source of funding for the general fund and special service district budgets coming from property taxes, I would like to remind everyone of a few FY26 budget highlights to show what these funds will be used for. As a reminder, our FY26 general fund and special service district budgets were adopted on May 28. on May twenty-eighth, 2025. Staff participated in several commissioner one-on-ones as well as multiple discussions with county leadership to establish the board priorities for the FY26 fiscal year. Staff also held two budget workshops and two public hearings to gain additional feedback prior to adoption. The adopted FY26 general fund and special service district budget is two hundred eighty-seven million, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, which is up twenty-eight point one million dollars compared to the FY25 adopted budget. This represents a ten point eight percent year-over-year increase. Some of the key items included in our FY26 budget, it is based on the current millage rate of fifteen point seven three three mils. It includes the following board of commissioner priorities, road improvements, judicial expansion due to county growth, continued funding for our public safety, personnel and equipment, and county personnel compensation and benefits. It also includes funding for department essentials to maintain the current service levels. Finally, the adopted budget was not built based on the use of fund balance. Only available revenues are being used to fund projected expenditures. Finally, this slide is a graphical representation of how the FY26 budget is currently allocated. As you can see, over fifty percent of the budget covers public safety. Government operations represents about sixteen percent. The judicial system represents eleven percent and public works is about six percent. Now I will turn the presentation over to our Tax Commissioner, Mr. Harris, who will carry you through the remainder of the presentation.
Thank you, Miss Campbell. And again, good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Council members and Commissioner members, I'm sorry. At the city, it's for the last two weeks. I apologize. And Commissioner Price, thank you again for bringing up that fond memory of mine from the DOT days. Appreciate that. As stated, this is our third public hearing to be followed by the adoption of the millage. Go through some of the slides I do annually real quickly and then open it up for any questions anyone may have. Again, first, what is the millage rate? The millage rate itself is simply a, the tax rate that's used to calculate our local property taxes. The rate itself represents the amount a homeowner has to pay for every one thousand dollars of property's assessed value. The assessed value includes both the structure, the house itself, as well as the land that it sits on. Property values broken up into two categories. It's a fair market value and then the other side is the assessed value. Fair market value is determined by our Tax Assessor's Office. They mail out notices in April and May typically every year, went a little bit longer later this year due to some of the legislative changes that we've seen. And that gives everyone an understanding of exactly what their property is appraising for, for that, for the current tax year. At that point, once upon receipt of the assessment notice, they have forty-five days should they wish to appeal the valuation of that property. The assessed value simply represents forty percent of the fair market value. So when you see your fair market value, your assessed value, the value that you're actually assessed on is simply forty percent of that fair market value. Calculating our property taxes. So again, we, the county, has been at fifteen point seven three three mils. This is now be the second year in a row at this millage rate. So just going through a simple calculation of how, how the individuals' property taxes are calculated. Again, the formula is relatively simple. Assess value minus any exemptions that may apply. That times your millage rate will give you your taxes due. Looking at two examples, one for a homesteaded property. This is a property with a fair market value of three hundred thousand dollars. That's your fair market value. That times forty percent will give you your assessed value of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And for this example, we're looking at a basic exemption, L-one exemption, which would, which would subtract fifteen thousand dollars off the assessed value to give a taxable value of a hundred and five thousand dollars. That a hundred and five thousand dollars times your millage rate of fifteen point seven three three would yield a county tax of one thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-six cents. And then once again, that is based on your standard L-one exemption. The second example is of a non-homesteaded property at the same fair market value of three hundred thousand dollars. That again, times your forty percent would yield a assessed value of again, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. However, in this instance, without having homestead, there would be no exemption reduction. Therefore, individual would be taxed at that a hundred and twenty thousand dollar rate as opposed to the hundred and five thousand rate, which in this case would yield a county tax of one thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents, which would be a difference of roughly two hundred and thirty-six dollars based on yours, simply on your standard L-one exemption. There are several exemptions that exist here in Henry County. One of the most impactful is the frozen exemption. We talk about that every year a little bit. Frozen exemption was placed into existence back in two thousand and four by local legislation and includes a primary residence and up to five contiguous acres of land. The base year for fair market value home from the year prior to filing for a homestead is simply to say, so if you were to file for a homestead this year, your base year would be twenty twenty-four. Exemption is automatically renewed from year to year as long as resident continues to occupy the home as their primary residence. Homeowner pays for the base year value of the county's, county and water portion of the tax bill even if the value increases beyond the base year. If the property does decrease below the base year, the homeowner would be, the homeowner would pay based on the lower rate. And the example I always give people is that if you bought your home in the year twenty-two thousand and it was valued at two hundred thousand dollars and you fast forward to twenty-twenty-five and that same home is now valued at four hundred thousand dollars for your county taxes and you filed for homestead back in twenty twenty, or two thousand rather, you would still now only be billed at the two hundred thousand dollar valuations. You can see how substantial that, that exemption could be. And I'm going to run through a quick example in a moment as well. Other exemptions that exist here in Henry County, beyond just the standard L-one exemption with the county, there also are additional age exemptions that apply to the school taxes and that begins at age sixty-two and from there it increases from twenty thousand at age sixty-two, eighty thousand at age sixty-five, hundred and twenty thousand dollar exemption at age sixty-eight and at age seventy, you're no longer paying school taxes. And there are some additional exemptions that are listed here for disability, veterans, surviving spouse, Freeport, and a few others. So the example I mentioned, I took, looked at a couple, we looked at a couple bills with the same, you know, one property. We took a twenty twenty-two bill and again, you can see that the fair market value in twenty twenty-two was two hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred. That gave an assessed value of a hundred and one thousand dollars. You have your basic exemption, fifteen thousand dollars, and we broke out the frozen portion to show that, that additional exemption amount of twenty-four thousand dollars, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars to give you a taxable value of sixty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. Fast forwarded to the year, and again, that applies to the county tax as well as unincorporated special services, police, fire, recreation, all those highlighted in yellow and green. So again, bear in mind the taxable value for that twenty twenty-two home that with a fair market value of two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars only being taxed at sixty-one thousand dollars. Fast forward to the twenty twenty-four tax bill, that same property is now valued at three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars and you'll see the basic exemption of fifteen thousand still remains. However, what you will notice is that that frozen exemption amount has now increased from twenty-four thousand up to seventy-six thousand. What that does is that's, that's adjusted in order to maintain that same taxable value of sixty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. So you are still only being taxed at that sixty-one thousand dollar value. So even though the home in this case is increased by over a hundred thousand dollars in value, what you are being taxed on has remained the same because that exemption amount has increased. And people often ask, how does that work? This is how it works. This is a, again, just a quick example of what to look for on your tax bill or if you have any questions, always contact our office. And again, please note that that applies only to the county tax items, unincorporated, special services, police, fire, recreation, stormwater. School and school bond, that does not apply for the frozen provision, however, they do have their age exemptions. Always kind of, I want to touch on this, where do our tax dollars go? This year, the school board, for the first time since two thousand and seven, have approved a reduced millage of nineteen point eight mils down from their, what they've had over the last several years of twenty mils. Their school bond is two mils. So collectively, between the school and maintenance and operations and the school bond, that represent about fifty-five percent of our, of everyone's tax bill. In addition, oh, five percent is accounted for through the water authority bond of two mils and remaining forty percent is made up by the county, proposed county mil of fifteen point seven three three, which goes towards county services. Just real quickly, the digest process itself, this is very much a collaborative process that involves several entities working together. The Tax Assessor's Office and Mr. Self, Chief Appraiser is here this evening as well. My office, Tax Commissioner's Office, the Board of Education, Board of Commissioners, obviously, our other taxing authorities, the cities, our four city stock, Bridge McDonough, Hampton, Locust Grove, and finally, Georgia Department of Revenue. The digest itself is, represents a list of assessments and exemptions consisting of real and personal property, timber that exists within the county, mobile homes, our motor vehicles, heavy-duty equipment, and public utilities. The digest, once perfected and finalized, must be sent to the State Department of Revenue before any tax bills can be sent out. So we have to finalize, perfect the digest, and that's done in conjunction with my office and Mr. Self's office. Once that's done, we send that information to the Department of Revenue. They review it and upon review, as has been every year, they'll issue a letter authorizing us to move forward with the tax collection process. Bills must be received sixty days in advance of the due date. So we have to, you know, when we send that notice, that bill out is critical, a critical date. Typically, we've mailed out our, our tax bills around the first of September. This year has been a bit more challenging due to a lot of the legislation that was enacted this year from House Bill five eighty-one. So we have been working diligently to, to maintain that same date. That's still our plan. That's still our goal. I can, can't tell you how many meetings myself and Mr. Self have been in along with state representative or state, Department of, state officials to get clarification on a variety of issues. Those meetings and conversations are ongoing, we meet with our, our vendors on a regular basis as well. And I really want to send kudos to John and his staff as well as Lynn Carty and her team in my office for all the work and all the hours that they have been and continue to put in to make sure we get a perfected digest once again this year in a timely manner. On the last slides, again, these are listed as the twenty twenty-five proposed millage rates and I do want to highlight the top line and that, that represents the millage rate that will be incorporated this year for Henry County residents. And you'll notice what I've listed is a current millage rate. Here in Henry County is thirty-nine point seven three three based on the, based on the millage rates that have been adopted by all the other taxing entities, school board, cities and everyone else. This year, county residents will see a slight reduction in the overall millage rate should the board choose to adopt their current proposed millage rate of fifteen point seven three three and you'll see a slight reduction just about all of them with the, with the exception of the City of Locust Grove. We've made some changes to our tax bill this year, so residents should see a slight change in there. What we've done is we've added a little more information, both on the front and the backside, just to make sure people answer questions that, you know, those frequently asked questions, we want to try to preempt and make sure we include that information on the tax bill itself. And that applies to both the real and the personal property tax bills. As noted, tonight's meeting represents the third and final public hearing and subsequent adoption of the public, of the millage rate for 2025. With that, I would be happy to entertain any questions or comments from the board.
So we're going to open it up for public comment. If there's anyone wishing to come and speak at public comment, please come forward. You have three minutes. Since no one came forward, public comment is closed. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Okay, Commissioner Wilson, we'll start with you. Commissioner Harris, and I guess Bonita, if you could come forward?
No, I didn't have any question, but I do want to have a comment for all of our citizens. So the good news is we're not raising your millage rate this year. So that's, I think that's the message that they need to hear. We've, I've had several comments that they thought we was raising the millage rate again, but we're not. We're voting on to keep the millage rate the same.
Commissioner Robinson?
I just want to say thank you guys with this process. You've worked so diligently with all the other entities to get us here. And like my colleague stated, you know, it's not an increase, but it's a slight decrease that we're having. So we're just, you know, so grateful for that and the outstanding work that you guys did to get us here. So thank you so much.
Commissioner Anglin?
So, thank y'all, Seth. I just, comments to the constituents. I know no one enjoys paying taxes, but everyone certainly expects fire and our PD to show up when they need them most. And that's where we're spending fifty percent of our resources from the county budget. I spend most days, for folks who don't know what I do for a living, helping all my clients avoid taxes, taking tax losses, and reducing their taxable footprint. With that being said, one of the things that makes us very attractive is Henry County is the taxable environment that we have compared to our neighbors that we should be very grateful for. And I know when you're paying your taxes, it doesn't always feel that way, but we do have our frozen homestead exemption that was in two thousand and four. Most of our neighbors do not have that. And then we also have the age phase-out program for school taxes, which trust me, with all the other families I work with in my, out of this job, they would love to have both of those available to them. And we have those both in Henry County. So that makes this a very good county to be in from a taxable resident perspective. But, and there's a big but, that prevents a huge challenge for us up here as we're preparing a budget and our staff. Imagine having a business where I told you you still were only collecting based off what someone was paying ten years ago. That's not a survivable business model. So with that being said, we have challenges as we continue to move this county forward. And I think our constituents need to know that and we're working hard. The first one is making sure we have the right business to residential mix. And that's extremely important. A sixty, forty split, we have strayed from. We are working to get back there, but what the sixty, forty split is, is sixty percent residential, forty percent commercial, because with the frozen homestead exemption, we have to have those businesses to pay their taxes. If not, we really only have three choices. And one, as I just mentioned, increase the commercial businesses. Two, cut the budget, which seems to be impossible to do when we are in a growing environment. Or three, increase the millage rate to meet demand. So I just want to make sure I share that message, the important things that we are trying to do from a tax standpoint as commissioners in helping to build a budget with staff. And when we see new businesses, it's important we support those businesses because they help pay that tax burden that we as residents get to enjoy from the benefit we get. So thank y'all so much for giving me just a minute to talk about that.
Let me get Commissioner. Commissioner Lewis, you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I'm just very thankful for the county staff and also to my colleagues for committing to, to not raising the millage rate. Commissioner Anglin just stated a lot of reasons why it's important. And I'm just very thankful that we're still able to deliver all the county services that are necessary without raising the millage rate and that we are true stewards of, of the finances of the county. So just thank you to all for this process and I'm just very glad we were able to keep the millage rate the same.
Thank you, Commissioner Price.
First hearing, so I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, just a great job that you all did in getting us to this point. I know it's a lot of work, a lot of I know it's a lot of work, a lot of numbers and talking, just to different people, to get the tax digest together, so I just want to thank you for the hard work that you all have done to get us to this place.
The only question that I have is, can you talk a little bit about FLOSS?
Well, I can kind of go into kind of the background behind it. So the FLOSS is a floating local option sales tax. With the passage of House Bill five eighty one here in Henry County, it allowed for an additional mechanism that taxing agencies, the county and the cities could utilize to help offset any, offset your, your, the, the millage, whatever the millage rate was. So here in Henry County, kind of relatively unique, we have, again, as mentioned, the floating exemption, or the frozen exemption, which only about thirty other counties, thirty some counties also utilize. So with the passage of House Bill five eighty one, the provision was put in place, and again, just to go back briefly, House Bill five eighty one was a legislative item that came up, was brought forth by the legislature this year, and what it introduced was a, a floating homestead exemption for, for residents. And what that would do is cap the valuation increase based on whatever the CPI is for that year, the Consumer Price Index. Typically, that runs anywhere from two to six percent year over year. So people would often ask, well, does that make sense for us to move in that direction, to go with the, the new floating homestead? And I would always tell people, I guess, as showed in the, in the example, what we have in Henry County is zero percent, because we have the frozen, so zero percent increase versus a three to four percent increase, when we have seen historically increases in our property values over the last five, six years of anywhere from five to ten to twenty percent in some cases. So certainly, we have that benefit here in Henry County of being, of having the frozen in place. The provision for FLOSS stated that in order to be eligible to collect this additional either half cent or one cent penny tax, all of the taxing agencies, the county and the four cities would have to opt in. The school board did not have to, in this case, in order to maintain eligibility. So that, that's what happened here in Henry County. So the county and the cities all opted in. Even by opting in, the question was posed to us often, well, does that mean we're going to be now go from a zero increase in our valuation to the CPI? Absolutely not. Part of the process with the legislation requires us to make sure we run calculations for each and every parcel to make sure that residents are getting the better of the two. So if we run an analysis and determine it'd be more beneficial for this, for this particular parcel to receive the FLOSS at three percent for whatever reason, versus the Henry County, current Henry County exemption, then they would get that. So, so that's already being done, and again, kudos to John, Self, and his team for working through a lot of those numbers. I will tell you, here in Henry County, about ninety nine point five or six percent of the residents will be, will continue to have the same current frozen exemption applied, because that's going to be the far better exemption. But because all these entities opted in to the five eighty one, they were given, now have, do have the option of voting on this floating local option sales tax, much in the same manner that we have a SFOSS in place right now, where we have a one cent tax, and you have a designated list of projects, and that, all the revenues generated from that one cent have to be applied to those projects in, in a similar fashion, but the FLOSS, everything generated, all the revenues generated from that additional tax have to be used toward the reduction of your millage. And that would apply to the county and all four of the cities. So needless to say, it'd be, it certainly a benefit for, you know, for residents, you know, from that regard, but that's, as my understanding, the county and cities are still having conversations in reference to it, so.
So it would take all of us, we'd have to enter into, and maybe County Manager, you can maybe, I guess, explain a little bit more the importance of if we were to do this and were, did it across the board, that it could save everyone. I mean, it, it would create opportunities across the board.
Absolutely.
If it was, I guess, some kind, some way split evenly across the board.
Yes, ma'am, madam chair. What's, what's most critical at this point is getting both the county and the cities to agree on an intergovernmental agreement. That is the only way that we're able to move forward with making sure that we have this placed on the November ballot. There has been a lot of conversation between the county staff and the city staff, and based on at least two options presented by the county, it would be an equal distribution of that rollback amount. I know that the cities have presented an option that we're going to have to have a little more conversation about, because obviously, based on what the Tax Commissioner has said, and based on the information that we've received, this is a tax relief option for the residents. And so we want to make sure that we are providing that. This is not similar to what we do with our loss negotiations, where there is a set of criteria that we're bound by. This is simply us agreeing on what that percentage amount needs to be. And so the county has presented at least two options to our city partners that would result in an equal distribution of that percentage, and we need to have a little more conversations, or a few more conversations with our city partners. I think what's most important also, Madam Chair, is that the way the language is written, the county has the option of entering into an IGA with the two most populous cities, and that is not what we want to do. We want to make sure that all of our residents benefit from this, because they have voted, indicating that they want to go to this next stage. The only issue that we have is that we are, we are on a very tight deadline. We have to be able to provide the information to our elections department, I believe by September fifth. Thank you, Shannon. By September fifth, which means that our board and the cities will either have to have some type of special call meeting to enter into these IGAs, or try to get them on our next agenda. And so we are working diligently to make that happen, but I appreciate you asking that question, because there has been a lot of questions, and I want you all to know, and our city representatives to know, that we are committed at the county level, and when I say we, I'm talking about our staff and our elected officials, to get in an IGA in place that's going to be an equal distribution to our residents.
And equal sounds fair to me. So thank you so much for that explanation.
And as a Henry County taxpayer, taxpayer, I'm rooting for y'all. And Madam Chair, if I could, I just want to again, once again, just echo how much, how appreciative I am and the entire staff, sharing her team, Benita, David, and everyone that kind of helps out you all this year. This has been, and continues to be, have some challenges associated with it, a lot of it based on the legislation we were faced with. But your flexibility throughout this process has really been greatly appreciative, and it hasn't gone without notice, so I want to thank you again publicly for always, you know, unveiling us and, and helping us to make sure we get through this, this, this major step.
Absolutely. So at this moment, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve leaving our millage rate at the current rate that it is at.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Technology Services. If you will come forward, Jamie.
of the community. Today, I am here to ask for your approval to purchase some hardware, some computers for the county. We are looking to purchase approximately two hundred Dell computers, two hundred laptops, six hundred monitors, and two hundred docking stations to go with the laptops. The purpose of this purchase is, Microsoft has announced an end date for Windows ten, so they'll no longer provide security for Windows ten. We have to make sure that we have all of our computers off of that come October. The computers that we're purchasing are going to do that for the majority of, will allow us to get the majority of the computers that will not upgrade onto Windows eleven out of our system and replace them with ones that will. This is going to be, we're going to be using capital improvement funds for this purchase, and I'll take any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, in favor.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. County Manager, do you have any comments, please?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board and pillars of our amazing community. Just a couple of upcoming events that I want the community to be aware of. For those that may or may not know, this week, we broke ground on the repaving of Burr Road in Commission District One. This is a SFOSS five project, and we are super excited to see that to the completion. So thank you, Commissioner Wilson. I know that has been a critical project for you. On September thirteenth, we have the Glow in the Park 5K. It is still not too late to sign up to walk, run, crawl, or cheer, but please make sure that you sign up for the Glow in the Park, which is on September thirteenth at Heritage Park. And then my final comment is, we are still very, very busy with our community cleanup. District Five still remains at the front line for having collected the most bags, but there are still two more opportunities for either District One or District Three to take home the trash prize. And so on September twentieth, we have our District One community cleanup, and on October twenty fifth, we have the District Three cleanup. Madam Chair, that ends my comments.
Thank you. Stephanie, do we have anyone signing up for public comment?
Yes.
Okay. Awesome. I'd like to get a motion to approve the July fifteenth BLC minutes.
Motion.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, in favor.
Okay. Our next upcoming meetings, September third is our regular scheduled BLC meeting at nine AM. The date was changed due to the holiday, the Labor Day holiday, so it'll be on Wednesday instead of Tuesday. September twenty third, twenty twenty five is a regular scheduled BLC meeting at six Date changed to fourth Tuesday of the month. If there are no other items, meeting is adjourned.